...and welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for May 25, 2023. You would stand with me please for the pledge. And Al would you lead us?
I would lead the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. We're seated. At this time, I will open the floor up for public comment and your questions to the board from the audience. If there is no one who would like to address the board, then I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and we will need to move to our village's business. Our scheduled agenda. First of all, I have a Public Works Week proclamation to read. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the Village of Webster. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now resolved that I, Daryl Byard, Mayor of the Village of Webster, do hereby designate the week of May 21 through 27, 2023 as Public Works Week in the Village of Webster. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster to reflect on and engage in activities designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals within this village and across the nation, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you, and we will post this publicly. Jake? And now, we will move to our first item on our agenda, which is resolution to approve the minutes from May 11, 2023.
If everybody's standing, I'll just make that motion.
No seconded.
Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Velking?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next, we have resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Do you have a copy of these in front of you? Several have looked them over. Any particular questions that you have that you would like to ask at this particular time?
Jake McCallister signs?
Yes. What's the sign there for? Trying to... Oh, signs for new W2, which is a new platform curb.
Oh, okay.
And then we've got, we had them do about $100 for eight or 10 small logos that we could put on their leaf machine and our chipper and things like that.
Okay. That reminded me that McCallister signs, are we doing anything with the sign coming into the village? You know, [BLEEP] by the old McDonald's there, you can't even see it, it's...
No, I know, and I guess, I should have been pressing more, but I remember bringing it to the board and looking for suggestions or information about what to put on those. Part of the, the issue where the signs, the part of it is they were donated and done by a gentleman that painted them all. You know, and I know we discussed doing an update possibly, including like the gazebo at the Veterans Park, something the same on both of those. We also started looking at doing replacements, like the one across from Kittleburgers on 250 with a little plant shelf and a cobblestone thing. Three of them, the quotes that we've been able to obtain so far were as much as a small house for the three of them, so we decided not to pursue that at this time, but trying to get some other... I'd love to work with at the school or some sort of, you know, where there's a training opportunity, because cobblestone, they're all cobblestone, and cobblestone is not a skill that's readily practiced, I guess, these days, so it's, you know, it's a challenge, but yeah, we have to do something. We can get those ones painted relatively easily, but we were looking at making a change to them, so we haven't kind of been paralyzed. But if there's any direction...
Let's get them painted at least.
I would think...
Peter Elder was gonna go get a ladder and go out and night spray paint it, and he said, "I haven't supplied the paint."
No, it's, no, we've got, I've got a guy, a gentleman that I talked to, and I forgot, it's about $900, $1,000 a piece, I think, to redo them for those three remaining signs.
Let's do it.
That was, that was hand painted sign work, but as far as picking out, I don't think he would do the birds that were in the middle, and they were all different, but if we had one thing that somebody could do in the center, that's what we talked about, the gazebo possibly, or if you can replace them with those other signs, but trying to, it's part of the idea of that gateway sign up north, is to continue that in the other three locations, trying to get the guy that did the one up north to come and do the other ones, or he'll call me back, or it's, it's such a, you know, I think cobblestone is such a weird...
It is.
...thing, and it's hard, but if there's three of them at the same time, you can only go, I might understand, you can only go about a foot or so a day, but if you have three of them and you're doing different sections, it seems like you could make a day out of, make a day out of doing it, but, no, we'll try to attack that again in a few moments.
At least have them painted.
Yeah, no, I can get the guy that did all these, my touch base with this guy, the gentleman, Ian McDonald, that's a signed painter.
Yeah.
Another lost art, but...
I can do it well.
Okay, others, like you could do it.
I'd do it too.
Some highlighters and...
It would be very abstract.
New box of crayons. Oh, we can, I was just kind of waiting for, see if there's any direction, but I'll just, I'll get them repainted now and then buy us some time to do some other stuff.
Do we have to make a motion for that?
No.
So...
Take it out of the trustee line, if we don't have money on our...
That was the first time you didn't say 1325.
I know. I'm trying to be nice. That was the first time for that, too.
The concerts are coming up in the village pretty soon.
Oh, my gosh, I know.
Are we gonna fix the steps coming down from the parking lot there?
That is also the same trade that would do the signs, and we can't, they're very difficult for the masons, we've been in touch. I know at least two different ones, I guess somebody else, but I'll make a note of that as well, and get those ready to take going again.
It's in pretty tough shape there.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? If that, make any motion to...
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry. Trustee Velking?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Next, we have a VBA appointment, and this is for Larry Hall. We are going to have, yes, a few of them coming up, but Larry is now coming due, so...
I guess I should have said reappointment, sorry. I said, I guess I should have called reappointment, sorry.
For his reappointment, correct. So, if anybody would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I think he's agreed.
I think he's doing a very good job, and very pleased that he stepped up to do this.
Don, do we need to say what date it will be?
Um, yes.
I gave Daryl the list of them last time we made the resolution.
I see on this list that you have a Mastrix, July 3, 2028.
Yes. Does that sound right to you, Don? Can we give this name, do you mind?
I don't have that section of the, so there's, how many members? There's five? And they stagger one a year? Then, if it would be five years, would be 2028?
Correct. But we're gonna do July 3, so, yeah, we do set July 3, 2028.
So, that would be appointment or reappointment for Larry until July 3, 2028.
It may actually be, it may not exactly be July 3, whatever the first...
July, how about just July? Can we do it generically?
Well, no, the official year of the village starts on the first Monday of the month following village election, so it's really to the first Monday of July 2028. Maybe it's the third, but it probably isn't the third, I don't have a calendar. If somebody looked on the phone, you could figure out what the first Monday in July of 2028 is.
Oh, okay, wow.
Uh, first Monday is July 3.
In 2028?
In 2028.
All right. I bet you're locked up.
I bet John looked it up.
Just so I entered it being July 3.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Trustee Velking?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So, does Larry know he's been sentenced to another five-year term?
I'll have him go call him.
We'll have to step to having time in between. Okay. I guess I would ask you, do you have anything at the moment for, for us to consider?
Well, Jake might chime in on this, we're making progress in finally, in finalizing the two IMAs with the town for the sewer outfall and the, what is the point?
Sampling.
The sampling, the town's new sampling point. We're getting close, we're closer, so hopefully we'll get that wrapped up. We might have the sampling point one ready for you in two weeks to approve, they have authorized them here to sign, because, does Jake want to chime in? They went down there today with Matt and Higgins to make, to make sure they understood what exactly it is that the town wants and why it's, the engineering's gonna be $9,500, and I think that's what the town's waiting for. The draft of the IMAs all done, I think they were holding back just to make sure the village was okay paying the $9,500 for the engineering before they go and hire B&amp;L, sign a contract with B&amp;L for the $9,500 bucks, but...
Yeah, we, as Don said, we got, we met down there today, got clarification on exactly what they're looking for, and it's basically a recreation of what's there over six or eight feet away. The current sampling location is where our, both the plant effluents combined, they have to move far enough away that they're getting just the town effluent and the village would sample just the village effluent. So, it makes sense what they want to do there, and it's essentially, you know, excavating around the side of the pipe and putting either a pre-caster or a form, spore in place or a cast in place, rectangular box around a pipe going through, and then cutting the top of the pipe off to expose it. Our initial thought was, you know, if you just need a sampling location, you need something to get a sampler down in, but there is, you know, maintenance sometimes on those samplers, someone's not getting in there, but you can see the pipe, you can see where the sample is, if it's, because they're just a plastic tube that goes down and picks up, so, you know, with the longer exposed area, you'd be able to see where that tube is, make sure it didn't ride up on something or some debris, or lint fell in somewhere, or something gets caught on it, and you'd be able to get that out. So, it makes sense, long story short, what they're, what they're asking for and what they're proposing, and I'm comfortable, you know, sending a letter, I think they were discussing a couple meetings ago about sending the letter out, they're actually starting that one through three, which is the design and the engineering for it, and then they'll return back with, okay, here's what we need to do, and then it'll be a construction estimate. Doesn't seem like a real heavy lift, and I think with mostly engineering firms, $9,500 is, if you ask them to look at anything, it's probably about, because they look at it with an engineer's eyes, which I think are different than the rest of us, but hopefully that the engineering part of it prevents any issues down the road, because they kind of overthink things, and I think I suffer that same affliction sometimes, so I don't want to cast stones. It's a little...
So, if this board would authorize either Jake or myself to either send a letter and email to Art Patron and Charlie Genesi, that the town, that the village is okay with the $9,500, I think they'll finalize that IMAs. And then there'll be another estimate after B&amp;L does their engineering, there'll be an engineer's estimate for the cost, which again is subject to the village reviewing for reasonableness, and that'll be another separate authorization to, you know, I said the bottom line is the village doesn't want to write a blank check, you know, we want our engineers to look at what their engineers doing to make sure and it's reasonable, and so far Matt has said what they're doing is reasonable, so, so I don't, you want to take a long vote or go to authorize us to okay the $9,500? The town will, the contracts with the town, but the agreement is, is that the town will, the village will reimburse the town.
Yeah.
And it's money that can come out of the, you know, the sewer upgrade funds, you know, the interest-free loan and everything.
I'll make that motion if we can...
I'll second that.
Yeah. Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Velking?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. No.
Okay. Ellen?
Okay. So, last meeting, we discussed putting Marsh, or I'm sorry, our office clerk, which is Don, up to an appropriate amount. Previously, I asked for an equity adjustment, and you had authorized 18, which was still well below what the amount was, so I sent this information to you, and Jerry had sent it to me to talk to some of the board members, and that he would be comfortable with putting her at 21. This is not a raise, this is just putting, making sure we're paying her an appropriate amount. And you can see attached, we've done research, and 21 is still lower, so I feel that that would be a fair amount, so that we're paying her appropriately. So, I would just ask for a motion to approve that. And Jerry had...
This is, what, you heard it first?
She's gonna be going on three years now. Actually, she just hit three years.
She just hit three?
Yep. And she had already started with experience, you know, Megan didn't have it, so it's different. She already came with, she was already a payroll clerk, she was already doing coding for bills, she was already doing all that stuff, and we started her at 16, so, not so good. So, I'm not asking for a raise, just to put her at an appropriate level.
I don't have any problem with that.
What then are, this is in lieu of a raise that would start at July 1?
This would go into effect at June 1. It would, that would be the amount, 21. It's not plus 3%, that's, I mean, that's it.
Yeah.
Nevermind.
I'd love to retain good employee, so...
Yeah, she is, she is very good.
She's mean, she gives me a lot of stuff to do all the time.
Oh, yeah. She's one of the good ones we have, yes.
She does a good job.
I always tell her she's mean enough to try to slow down the stuff, but it doesn't work.
They have a good thing, though, they, they have a good, with bills and they have a good rapport and good thing going, good system, so. Can I ask for that? Thank you, okay. No, she brought that in on her own.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Thank you. Trustee Velking?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So, what he was referring to is that she's a little short for the counter, so she brought in the staffs to do passwords. We love her. Thank you, really.
Look, I love her when she says poker.
Thank you.
Okay. Jake?
Yes, I first want to thank the board for the, and the mayor for the public works proclamation, recognizing public works week. When you get to work close to the crew here, they do a lot of, it could be jag of all trades, and they do protect a lot of stuff that nobody ever sees, you know, that's underground and, and some of the things that people see and some of the things they don't. But they do a lot of work and have to know a lot of different things, so thanks for recognizing that. Next brush pickup's gonna be the first full week of June, which should be, I think the week that I want to say the fourth, that Monday, the fifth, whatever that Monday is, that's the first full week, we're gonna do brush pickup then, and, you know, starting our normal, the plant, planters out today, or the boxes out today, on Main Street, so we're just gonna be watering back and blowing.
That's really good.
Yeah, so we can continue on, but that's, that's it. There is a new truck at the next meeting, I was hoping to have information for you tonight, but I just got some this afternoon, final, we're looking at, it was in this current budget, it's a new six-wheeler, and we have, it's coming in probably about 40,000 or 50,000 less than what we have in that account right now, which is surprising. But we just got the pieces, you have to, there's, oh, and I have your county bid, so it's been bid, it doesn't have to be done after a bit of inspection, go out, it's gonna, you gotta pick the truck, you go back and forth, and they've already been bid according to the rules. There's two different vendors we're looking at for the upfitter, or, you know, the snowplow and the wing and the salter in the, in the box. We just got those, the final, the last one today, so we want to go, you know, evaluate all that and look at the best, the best setup on it, and then have a suggestion, but we'll be doing that at the next meeting, like I said, it's a missed current budget, so the next meeting's gonna be, I guess after the, we will secure the funds ahead of time and await board authorization to send an appeal in the, as we have to, in this current budget, or if it's in our budget, out of the game, one or another, whatever, whatever way, we'll lay that on the new tractor. And then the last piece, I think you recall it, a couple meetings ago, we had a, you know, a couple invoices submitted from a resident on Donny Avenue.
Yeah.
We submitted that to our insurance company. We haven't got the letter yet, but we got an email from our insurance agent here that the claim that through Zurich, I believe it was, the claim was denied. That was a kind of a tricky one, I'd like to continue once we have the letter to see why they denied and more likely argue about it, but in the meantime, you know, like to see if we could draft something to the resident where, you know, we could pay, this would be the only claim, this is settle all the claims about this, and if there is any payment from an insurance company that, if they send it to him, that he would, you know, pay and reimburse whatever he gets to the village, and then be able to, to pay to make the resident whole. But I think you have it in front of you, there's 9,800, I believe, altogether?
9,950, and then four or five?
So, if you, if you...
Yeah.
If you recall, this was a incident that occurred when they redid Donny Avenue about 2002, 2001, 2002, the pipe was injured, I guess, but it's insurance covers a loss, and the loss didn't actually occur until now, but these, they weren't our insurance company at the time, the insurance company for the contract that didn't work, I don't know if they're still around, so it's, it's a really goofy situation, the pipe was struck, they, the contract that was hired with two water lines through your sewer lateral, and it ran for 20 years until it finally failed, where there's no doubt that it failed at that location where the lines went through.
Is Zurich?
Who was the other one?
Is Zurich, that village's current insurance carrier?
Yes, yep. But they, I asked about going back, you know, contact has statute of limitations, and she, it's, they covered loss, they don't cover the injury, and the injury occurred back then, but the loss covered now, happened now, so that's why she submitted its origin to our company now, from what I understand, because that's, that's when the impact of the, it's striking and happened. It was the same, same lateral, there was two water lines that went across the street together and split off the different houses, and they went through, it was just one lateral, so. Oh, I thought you had it. You have a total of, I'm here, 9,950, 405. It's 10,355 is what the resident made out so far, or paid out for that damage.
Wow.
Yeah, it was out, you know, it's in the lateral that went out in the street, so there's three days, things like that.
My guess is they denied it because the statute of limitations is run long ago to go against the contractor who was the actual negligent part, so Zurich says, you know, usually the insurance company wants recourse against who was actually responsible for the loss, and here they, you know, if it happened back in 2001 or 2002, for negligence, it's a three-year statute of limitations.
I think I would continue to fight it myself, but I think this, if we could, I mean, I'd be arguing with them, I'd, but I'd like to make the resident whole and then argue with them and then somehow draft an agreement, and say, let's, you know, this settles everything, but if you get, you know, if there is a claim that's successful, and they said that to them rather than us, that they would just reimburse the village for whatever part they get from this claim specific to this, if I guess...
Make sure that we have it written.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I guarantee it would, but I'm sure that you can actually have it written, if that's acceptable.
I mean, it's a little touchy to have them give it for... I mean, it's a little touchy to have them give it back, because like they should, but...
Well, if it's in an agreement, we said they, we already paid you for this one. If they accept that they've already been paid for it, then they didn't have a loss. And I don't know, that might be a fraud, but, and I don't think they would. But I don't know.
Would they continue to press for that reimbursement however, if we paid for it?
Oh, they're not pressing, we're pressing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would press it. They've just asked, they've just asked us, and I think that the last time we brought this up, everybody was in agreement that it was absolutely the right thing to do and had no, no fault of the resident. It was a contractor, the supervisor of the village that did this, so make them whole. And I think that the time, Don said, hold off because the insurance company would pay them directly. And if they saw they were already paid, they probably wouldn't. And that was denied. That's why I was wondering if we, okay, you know, they've been out this money for about a month almost. So if they were made whole, then if it was part of, I don't know, it'd be appropriate. But if it was part of an agreement that, you know, made everything satisfied and if you get something else, if there's any payments from this, it go to you instead of the village and, you know, pay the village.
Village, what do they get back?
Whatever that equal payment would be, they get six grand from it, they get, you know, all that.
I'm just wondering if that would put in the mind of an insurance company while it's been paid, would it continue to deny and, you know, stunt the paid? I don't know.
And that's, I don't know, if we're the, if we paid out, does it make us the injured party then? If we had a loss, or is it not because...
Do you have, is there any contract going back to when this work was done between the village and the contractor?
Yes, and I provide that to the insurance company.
And does the contract provide for indemnification by the contractor to the village for their negligence?
I can give that to the attorney to read. There's a lot of big words in there.
And I suppose, because if it does, then, you know, that's the village's loss. I don't think, I'll be shocked if Zurich pays the money. Because of the statute of limitations. I would, I think you should wait till at least you get the letter from the insurance company that explains the denial before you send a check to the homeowner. So you can then make an educated decision as to whether it's worth still trying to pursue the claim with the insurance company. You know, if they've got, if it's pretty ironclad that they're not, that the denial was reasonable, appropriate, then why are you wasting your time? You've got more important things to do. Well, you know, it's...
But yeah, no, I get your point.
Everybody likes to win, but you gotta, you know, you gotta give a lot of the facts on your side first. And the problem is this all happened so long ago.
Yeah, it's no longer...
You know, but nobody discovered it till now. And the question is when could it have been discovered? You know, you don't know the homeowners, when did they start having problems with their plumbing, flushing their toilets and stuff? You know, they could have been having issues months and months, years, who knows how long, before they actually decided to do something about it. So that would go back even, you know, it's not when, it's not when the injury was discovered, but when it reasonably could have been discovered. Which is, you know, and now you're getting into, you know, talking to the homeowners and getting them all bent out of shape and... You can go ahead, Jake, if you, if you just like, I know you love to argue, so. If you wanna try, but at least wait till you get the response from the insurance company to see what they're, what it says. And send that to me. And then, you know, at some point, this board's gonna have to authorize payment. It'll be on the bill pay stuff and you can authorize it.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Keep up the good fight, save us 10 grand.
If it causes fault from doing, I'll get that. I think that's a...
If you don't want to take it out of your mind.
What's that?
If you don't want to take it out of your mind.
I know, that's why I'm afraid of.
Anything else, Jake?
No.
No? Anything from the board? Do you have anything for us? Jerry, I believe, is at the town tonight?
Yes.
So you were having a meeting regarding people? Please hear what the outcome of that meeting is. Okay, our next village board meeting is June 8. And following that, in June, it will be the 22nd as well. So we look forward to seeing you all again at this time. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And just one thing about the equals. If they, if the town decides on the ambulance district, the village has to buy the...
Yes.
It doesn't automatically...
No.
In fact, the village has to pass a local law, subject to a referendum, permissive referendum, I think, to join the ambulance district. So it's...
What if they go short-term?
I don't know what their short-term options is.
Because that's what the initial indication was.
You're not gonna form, it makes no... It's a little frustrating. I'm a little frustrated with, with the town and the town supervisor. Because for whatever reason, he's, he keeps close to his vest. I asked him, over time, what's the short-term solution? He wouldn't tell me. He said, oh, we got some ideas. I said, well, does it involve, you know, you know, I thought it would just involve, you know, paying them some cash short-term. You know, all right, you need some money, we'll agree on an amount. And it'll come out of the A fund, which the village taxpayer, the A fund of the town, which village residents contribute to. So basically, everybody's paying for it. He said, oh, no, it may not be that, uh, uh. He wouldn't tell me what it was. But it doesn't make any sense to go into the formality of forming an ambulance district, only to have it last, what, a couple of months? And then what, you're gonna dissolve it? That makes no sense. So...
Compared to the old days when the firemen...
It's a little frustrating that they haven't seen fit to include the village in any of these discussions.
I haven't seen...
Despite, despite me asking them, Daryl asking them, and several times, the...
Can you clue us in on what's going on? And they...
So I was so happy to hear Jerry was going...
For whatever reason, they won't.
An equals hasn't reached out to us either after he reached out to you.
Right. Right, he wanted, he wanted to, which made no sense. Ahmad wanted to meet with me to talk about the village. And I said, I don't make policy for the village, I'm just the village attorney. I said, if you wanna come to a workshop and present whatever you wanna present to the trustees, they love that. And so I told him that, I told Heather that, and we haven't heard a word from him since.
Heather said that he had reached out, however, I have nothing in the emails, I have not had a phone call from him.
He said he's reached out multiple times.
Right. Yeah, so, I don't know. It's, it is a little frustrating.
Like I said, I wanted to go back to when the firemen had the ambulances.
Yeah, regrettably, you can't do that anymore.
Why?
Well, I don't think the fire department wants to be in the ambulance business anymore. They all got rid of them.
They separated them all. I think there's a department, there's something with the village, you can't, that's connected to separating, you know, certified, you know, it's all...
You didn't say a lot deeper. Yeah. No, they didn't. We didn't adjourn it.
Well, right now, if you get sick and get taken to a hospital, it's a $500.
Double that.
Oh, it's probably more than that.
It's double.
It's over a grand there. When I went, it was only $400.
We gotta move for an employee here, it was like...
Well, it depends on your health insurance and what your, you know, if you gotta cop out.
Well, that's why I called Jake and I had Jake take me to the hospital.
I only charged her $400.
Well, we'll wait to hear it and we'll certainly be interested in what the result of that...
You know, starting tomorrow or the next day, the town's gonna have it on their website, so you can... It's in the website, they're live to the recording of it.
Well, can anybody ask questions? Because it's usual.
This was, this was a town workshop, so they weren't, I'm not understanding what's, is the town board wasn't entertaining questions.
Exactly.
Okay, well, we have a motion and it's been made and seconded to adjourn. So at this particular time, 7:41. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I thought you had a shot at beating your record there.
No, a lot of ones have got to...
The attorney went too long, I think.